Good morning, welcome to a regular meeting of the Bard County Commission, May 22. Pastor Richard Fuller, there you are.
Let's pray together. Lord, we just thank you for a new day, thank you for your new mercies, and as we gather here, we lift up our eyes to the hills and we say, where does our help come from? Lord, I don't know the exact agenda, but I know that our help comes from the maker of heaven and earth. And Lord, you neither sleep nor slumber, and you keep our coming in and our going out from this time forth and forevermore, and that brings us such comfort. So, Lord, thank you. Thank you for our leadership, thank you for the people here, and we just pray that you'd be honored and glorified in this time, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goodson, you're on.
Please, yes, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Commission, I have one set of minutes for approval, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Goodson, second by Commissioner Felton, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass. Oh, I got the wrong agenda here, sorry guys. Passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move into resolutions, and I have, I'm sorry, I don't, I think this is District Four, is this you?
Yep.
All right.
I have two.
All right.
The first one is for Public Works, so if we can have our Public Works folks, I think I see Tom Mulligan back there, Virginia Barker, Eddie, Mark Bernath, right?
Come on, come on.
So I'll read the resolution, and then you can speak afterward, or after we vote, and then I think we have four of the resolutions for the four departments. This might seem a little long, but you can see, we have a big group. Whereas the American Public Works Association is an international, educational, and professional organization established in 1960 that works to promote the use of best practices for public works-related services, and whereas the association continually works with national, state, and local agencies to improve awareness of public work systems and programs, including water, sewer, streets, highways, bridges, stormwater, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the Brevard County Public Works Department mission is to plan and implement projects and services that create and maintain a comprehensive transportation and facilities infrastructure, the department maintains 1,142 miles of paved roads, 82 miles of dirt roads, 715 miles of sidewalk, 886 miles of curb and gutter, 951 miles of drainage ditches and swales, 17,310 miles, or I'm sorry, drainage pipes, 49 bridges, 65,000 signs, 354 traffic signals, 667 streetlights, 190 warning beacons and school zone flashers, and 1.8 million square feet of county buildings, and has more than 750 projects in progress. And whereas Brevard County Solid Waste Management Department mission is to protect public health by providing an efficient and environmentally sound solid waste management system, the department handles 4,000 tons of solid waste per day, disposing 1.2 million tons of waste per year, and whereas the mission of the Brevard County Natural Resources Management Department is to foster sustainable use and stewardship of the county's natural resources through cost-effective, science-based, and consensus-driven management actions, the department sweeps 6,000 lane miles of curbed streets, maintains 485 stormwater treatment facilities, and performs 500 inspections of hazardous material facilities, and whereas the Brevard County Utility Services Department continues to invest and renew assets for the benefit of public safety and the environment for generations to come, the department assures that federal and state environmental laws pertaining to water, sewer, and reuse are met, and whereas we recognize and celebrate the important contributions that public professionals make, public works professionals make connecting the world through public works, we encourage community members to join in activities and ceremonies that are designed to pay tribute to public works professionals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida designates the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, both second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously, y'all are busy.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, I want to express my sincerest gratitude for the board's support of this resolution to recognize National Public Works Week, and in particular Commissioner Felton for sponsoring this recognition. With government investment in services, infrastructure, utility investments throughout the 1930s, the course of public works and the trajectory of our shared history changed dramatically over the last near century. In 1937, a group of public works leaders formed the American Public Works Association. In 1960, the APWA received an official endorsement from the U.S. Senate to organize its first National Public Works Week as a celebration to raise awareness about the important work done by public works professionals. Since then, Public Works Week has grown into an international event that celebrates the contributions of those who plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the infrastructure and public facilities that keep our communities running smoothly. Public works in this context isn't just defined by the department I lead, but rather the broader community of professionals that help provide infrastructure, water, wastewater, stormwater, solid waste, and many other related tasks. The staff behind these essential services are what make our communities great places to live and work. To that end, I am up here on behalf of the four primary county departments that lead these tasks and the nearly 750 employees combined. The men and women behind me represent these departments and are professionals on the front lines, not just Monday through Friday, but also during emergencies and natural disasters, ensuring that critical services continue to operate even in the most challenging of circumstances. This year's theme, Connecting the World Through Public Works, highlights the way public works professionals connect us physically through infrastructure and inspirationally through services to their communities. By recognizing Public Works Week, you're acknowledging the hard work, dedication, and expertise of these professionals. We're also reminding ourselves of the importance of investing in our infrastructure and the people who maintain it. Without their tireless efforts, our communities would not be vibrant, connected, and the safe places that we call home. For those listening in the chamber or online, if you believe you have what it takes to help make a difference in our community or know someone who does, please go to brevardfl.gov. From administrative assistants to accountants to maintenance workers to HVAC mechanics to equipment operators, utility mechanics, construction coordinators, engineers, and environmental scientists, and a lot in between, we are hiring. Once again, I want to thank the board for its support of this resolution. Together, we can build and maintain a brighter future for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mark? Do any of the other department heads want to say anything? Virginia, Eddie, Tom? No. Mark was the elected spokesperson. Okay. We have four of the resolutions for you, so I'll let Don kind of arrange how we're gonna take the pictures. Should we all join him?
Yeah. Come in front of the podium, I guess. Come over here, so that you're not blocked by the podium.
have time to set up. Do I have the Childcare Provider Appreciation Day, folks? Would y'all come forward? Sir, you want to come up too? Did you want to come up?
I want to.
Okay, I'm gonna read this, and then you are welcome to say a few things, and thank you for all you do, our children are definitely our, I think they're our most important asset, so thank you for this. Whereas National Provider Appreciation Day, also known as National Child Care Provider Day, is celebrated on May the 12th, 2023, whereas childcare providers offer the opportunity for parents who live in Brevard County to work, attend school, participate in job training, while their children are in a high-quality, safe environment. Florida's home to 1.3 million children under the age of six years old, and nearly 10,000-plus children in Brevard County attend one of the 600-plus early education programs each day in Brevard, and I happen to get the privilege to work at one of these myself. Whereas Brevard County provides resources and referral services to family in the school readiness and voluntary pre-kindergarten programs, with over 200 childcare programs, small and large private businesses, family childcare homes, faith-based programs, and public school settings, which employ over 1,200 early learning educators to support working families. You guys got a big job. Whereas Provider Appreciation Day allows Brevard County to honor its childcare educator's commitment to facilitating high-quality care and early learning to our youngest learners. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Brevard County Commissioners of Brevard County does hereby proclaim May the 12th, 2023, as National Childcare Provider Appreciation Day. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Ms. Laura?
Thank you, thank you. If I could turn it over to our board chair, I think he wants us to say a word or two.
I've been forced into this, but I will do it. Good morning, thank you for having us here today and for recognizing that we do this work. It's very critical, I think about it all the time, because as technology keeps moving forward, we need our children to be ready to accept the roles. The role of, well, simplified things like auto mechanic, even that has become computer-generated. There has to be a basic grounding in the sciences, the STEM field. We changed our company logo to have a rocket on it now, which sort of indicates what our county is about. It's about moving forward and reaching for the stars, and if we prepare our children at an early age to like and accept the sciences, we're giving them a head start, and that's our goal. We are also tied into Miami University, who's got a starting program in STEM technology programs and wants us to be a part of it. We're gonna come on board with that, as if we don't have enough material to deal with already. Well, thanks again, and have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll just say, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Felton, County Manager, and the entire Commission for recognizing this. This is for our childcare providers. They are the teachers, the leads, the directors, the VPK teachers that are making the difference in our community. They are preparing the future workforce. They're preparing children in the K-12 system, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I also want to mention this, I've noticed this period of time, is now both parents have to work, and thank you for all you do in these places and these teachers, because they're providing a safe environment for these children to grow up into, and so it's really necessary that we keep that high quality of care going, and thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the support. Thank you. Thanks. We got a picture?
Okay, can I have Dorothy Walsh, Don, the rest of Rolling Thunder, if you want to Thank you for asking me to do this today, it's an honor. I have a resolution for Gold Star families, I'll read that, and then we'll invite you to speak, and we'll present you with the resolution. Whereas we are indebted to the men and women in our armed services, and as we remember those who have died in the service to our country, we must also remember the mothers, fathers, and family members who have suffered the great loss of their family member for the sake of our country. And whereas Gold Star Mothers, Fathers, and Family ceremonies commemorate the contribution, commitment, and sacrifice made by these families of the military member who died in service to our country, and whereas on Friday, May 26th, 2023, Brevard County and the State of Florida honors and thanks Gold Star Mothers, Fathers, and Family Members for their sacrifice with the lighting of the Flame of Freedom at the Veterans Memorial Center, and whereas we will be forever grateful for the ultimate sacrifice made by these heroes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida recognizes Gold Star families. Done ordered and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of May, 2023. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Second by Commissioner Tobias, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously.
Dorothy?
I'd like to thank the Commission for approving this, and thank you for Rob, to Rob for helping me organize this and get this done. Gold Star families sometimes are the forgotten lot, they are the ones that raised their children to be the heroes that they are, they are the ones that grieve the loss of their children, and Rolling Thunder, on an annual basis, we have what's called the Flame of Freedom to honor all of our Gold Star families. With that said, I would just like to ask my husband, Don Pierceall, to say a few words, so you could hear it first, as a Gold Star father.
Thank you. Commissioners, my name is Don Pierceall, I'm a Gold Star father. I lost my son in a desert storm back in the 90s. He was in Kuwait guarding a company called Boots and Coots, who were at the time extinguishing the oil well fires in Kuwait. He took a lot of gas, and unfortunately, because of the oil well fires, he passed shortly afterwards. And I just want to thank everybody here for acknowledging this, it's really important to a lot, a lot of us, the hurt never goes away, I mean, and those who experience something like this can understand it, but I just want to thank the Commission for recognizing it, and Rolling Thunder, we're not a motorcycle club, it's a group of concerned veterans that help each other and help the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, we're gonna move into consent agenda, I have no comment cards, do any of y'all want anything polled? I got all my information last few days. Commissioner Felton, do you want anything polled on consent?
No, ma'am.
All right, have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second?
Second.
By Commissioner Goodson, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 4-0. We're gonna move into public hearings, item G1.
Good morning, Commissioners. This item before you is a hearing, the first of two, for our annual action plan. This one is required by HUD, our funding source, they require that we have an initial hearing to accept input from the public on creation of the plan itself. So we ask that you have that opportunity for anybody in the public who wishes to make comment.
Thank you, sir. I have no cards on this item either, Commissioners, what's your pleasure? I have no lights.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Felton, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimous. Commissioner Tobias, this is your district, sir, so.
Madam Chair, I have no issues with this, if we want to read in the record, I will be supporting this.
Good morning, Commissioners, G2 is public utility and drainage easement for 915 Sequoia Street, Barefoot Bay, it's in District 3, it's a six-foot wide public utility and drainage easement to allow a covered carport to remain.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion?
I'll second.
And I have a second by Commissioner Felton, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Item G3.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Item G3 is requesting your final approval for the creation of Article 4 in Chapter 90 of the Code of Ordinances for the Workforce and Support of Housing Trust Fund. The language reflects the ballot language that voters approved this past November.
Thank you, sir, it looks great to me. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Felton, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. All right, moving into item I-1.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item I-1 seeks legislative intent and permission to advertise amendments to the Floodwaying Protection Code, Chapter 62, Article 10, Division 5. Currently, in the North Merritt Island area, we don't have the ability to issue permits for accessory structures requiring fill, so this amendment would explore options for allowing that as long as there was no adverse impact to the area.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Goodson, this is your district, looks good to me, but.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I have maybe a question, or two questions. How would this affect the existing buildings that are already there?
This would be for new permits only, new structures only.
New structures only, and who would approve, or who would have the comment to say, it affects me downstream?
Well, we have a hydraulic and hydrologic model, so we can use that to determine impacts on the neighborhood, but it would be part of the permit review process.
Would you think it would be extreme, or would it be fair?
It really depends on the parcel and the area and how much fill is required for the structure, so, but the ordinance requires that those impacts are offset.
But fill required for the house has no bearing at all, correct?
This is for accessory structures. You also have to provide compensatory storage for fill required for primary structures as well.
Okay, okay, thank you, Madam Chair, that's all the questions I have.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion for approval.
Count a motion by Commissioner Goodson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Item.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, good morning. The item before you is the promised ocean rescue assessment that Fire Rescue has conducted, it's a rather comprehensive document that we sent out to the Commissioners and was included in the agenda package as an attachment to I-2, where we looked at historically what we've done in Brevard County as it relates to ocean lifeguard services, and how that has grown and developed over time in light of a variety of incidents that occurred late last year and early this year, there were, as the report indicates, a variety of things that Fire Rescue Ocean Lifeguard Program did to enhance the services, but there are also future opportunities, so what we did is put together a package that provides you data about what has happened in different areas of the county, what we've done with partnerships with certain cities that are making some contributions to some of the temporary lifeguard stands that we have in our seasonal program, and we've given you a cost analysis. So, staff is here this morning to answer any questions that you may have about the assessment, and to follow, of course, any direction that the board may want to provide concerning how we proceed from this point forward.
Thank you, City Manager, and your report was excellent. Pardon? You know what, I've done that from the beginning of time, I just got in the habit of that. County Manager. Ms. Sidiya Brevard, what's your problem? All right, okay, I'm gonna shut off Rob's mic up here. Ms. Sandra Sullivan, ma'am.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So this was an item that interested me a great deal. interested me a great deal. Haven't seen the drownings on the beaches and haven't been following this for a while, but the scientific studies show that the type of sand that we're using from the port has scientific studies to show more riptide, rip currents and drownings as a consequence of it. So just as a pre-comment. So we're looking right here on this item at roughly one and a half million dollars funding lifeguards to cities who are charging parking. Parking on some of these parks that belong to the county that the county has given to cities. And the idea, as stated by one of our Commissioners up here, was that beach parks are liabilities to the county. So we're going to hand these parks off and we're going to give them away to do away with that liability, but in fact, the county is continuing with those liabilities. The liabilities for sand renouishment and the liability for lifeguards. So why are we handing off parks to cities who then charge parking while the county is still paying for lifeguards? That's one, almost $1.5 million of services, with lifeguard services, to these cities who are charging for parking. And it goes to a bigger picture. So as free county parks, we pay with our taxes, but then you, you know, instead of making a potentially difficult decision and choosing to say have premium parks with extra services that you charge, you give them to the city who puts that in place, right? But then the problem with that is now we're not just taxed once by the county. If we go to the Atlantic, we pay for a pass, that's $40 there. We go to another city, it's $75 there. To another city, it's $100 there. So now we're getting taxed multiple times to go to the parks that were former county parks. Really what we should be doing is having the vision to have a common product across the county and how do what Collier County does. Collier County has a pass that we can go to all their, the reciprocal, to go to the parks. You pay for one parking pass. That would take care of this. Have the cities pay their share of the lifeguards. If they're charging for parking, they should be paying for their lifeguards because they're pulling in a lot more money. And what's really heartburn for me is when they're former county parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Tobias, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to begin by thanking staff for this comprehensive report they put together.
City staff?
Did I say city?
No, I'm just joking.
Okay, sorry. County staff for putting this together. This was numerous agencies that came together, not only to give us some background, but to make some suggestions. And I learned quite a bit, so I wanted to point out some highlights here and then go in a direction by providing a motion here at the end. First of all, it's very apparent that lifeguards work. Over 390 rip current rescues have been performed just between November 2022 and March 2023. Since 2009, 2010, when a full-time tower, when they were first installed, there have been zero drownings, deaths at lifeguard-protected beaches during operational hours. However, here's the hiccup. The county still has many vacancies due to reoccurring challenges. Ocean Rescue has averaged 40% vacancies in seasonal positions since the pandemic, and currently we're at 51 vacancies of 118 positions, both full-time and part-time. So those are the challenges that we are facing. And we do have partners in here. These are cities Ms. Sullivan mentioned and other of them. So let's start what statute lays out. And statute's pretty clear, that does not require the county to pay for lifeguards. In fact, according to Article 10, Section 11 of the Florida Constitution, it states that the state owns what is defined as the mean high water lines, which is actually where the deaths occur in the water. So by saying it's our responsibility, that technically is not true. Constitution lays out it's the state. So what do we pay right now? The cities pay 26% of the county's total cost for the seasonal towers, and the cities pay 0% for full-time towers. So you might want to average those, put them together, and you would be completely incorrect. In total, the cities pay, when you add up, that the cities pay $145,280 of $2.67 million. In other words, they pay 5.4% of the total. Let me say that another way. The county pays 94.6% of the total responsibility. Now, the city's responsibility to provide lifeguards should mimic that, I believe, of law enforcement responsibilities. If there's a shooting or a fire in a park within a city, the local municipality's law enforcement is called, not ours, the sheriff. Commissioner Tom Goodson aptly pointed out that cities have almost $2.5 million in combined dedicated parking revenue. Therefore, they should provide lifeguard services within their city limits, as the county should provide lifeguard services in unincorporated Brevard. Commissioner Reed Appritts' constituents should not be paying into the general fund for lifeguards through property taxes for beaches that are in District 2, 3, 4, or 5. So what are the solutions now that the finances have been laid out? And let me throw a couple out here. And you might assume that the first one runs counter to the argument I made, and maybe it does. But I'd first of all like to suggest that we approve priorities 1 through 3 as outlined in the 2023 rescue assessment. Safety is of paramount priority to Brevard County. Even though the county does not charge for parking in our parks, it shows of good faith, and the county needs to come up with the additional funds to support our lifeguard services through 2022, 2023. I'm sure everyone read the report, but for those of the people that didn't have the benefit to read it ahead of time, those priorities include upgrading two seasonal towers at the Indian Atlantic Boardwalk, North Spessert Holland, to full-time towers. Relocate the two seasonal towers to Spessert Holland and Juan Ponce de Leon Landing. And in good faith, I suggest we cover the cost for those upgrades for the 2022, 2023 Indian Atlantic Boardwalk, even though it is located within the town of Indian Atlantic. So what is the additional cost there? Well, over the course of a year, and it won't be a full year, but over the course of the year, that additional cost that would be burdened would be about $898,000. The funding source would be 2022, 2023 reallocation of funds from this year's budget. So that's, would take care almost immediately of the issues that we have before us. What it would also do is give the cities the ability to start getting their ducks in order and allocating some of those parking funds to cover their fair share of that. So the second and more important one is the solutions beginning 2023, 2024 year. The solution would be, in my suggestion, to fully staff unincorporated Brevard parks first. Number two, recruit, train, and maintain a pool of lifeguards, as we do. And number three, transfer funding responsibilities, including capital and operational costs for lifeguard towers located both seasonal and full at a city or privately maintained park located within city limits. In other words, we would merely be a pass-through. No profits would be made. Staff can create a consistent cost guideline for all cities, so we do it equitably and fairly. Revenues from paid parking can support these at the city parks. For instance, the city of Indian Atlantic, actual 2021, 2022 numbers for Nance Park were $411,000 alone. The cost estimate for a full-time tower at Indian Atlantic is $362,000, leaving them left over money. If a city thinks that it can provide the services more efficiently than Brevard County, then by all means, they would have the right to provide those lifeguards to do that. But give the cities until the beginning of the 2022, 2023 year to decide how they would like to proceed. This would be quite a bit of a change for the 2023, 2024 year. It would be roughly a net savings of the county of 1. almost $5 million. Our responsibility would still be slightly over $1 million to those parks in unincorporated areas. The parks that would be affected, and I have a handout here, are Cocoa Beach Pier, Shepherd Park, Coconuts, Tulip Avenue Boardwalk, and Ocean Avenue. And for future discussion, Brevard County continues to provide and fund lifeguard towers, both seasonal and full, that are maintained and owned by the county until these parks can be turned over to the cities in which they're located. So as a long-term project, and when I say long-term, I think I brought this up three or four years ago. I wish I would have brought up this as an argument. But we need to start looking at turning over those parks to the cities so they have the ability not only to provide lifeguard services, but maintain the parks that are located within their city. Those, I'd be glad to go over those, but that's a long-term project that hopefully we can begin to assess. I'd be more than willing to go over how we would do this. I have a motion, but I'd certainly like to hear comments and thoughts before I go over what contracts we have in place and what the motion would be to ask staff to help fix some of these issues. But that's, those are my thoughts of how we tackle this, both immediately and in the 2023, 2024 fiscal year. Thanks, Madam Chair.
You did a lot of research, sir. Commissioner Goodson and Felton, do you want to weigh in here?
Go ahead.
I'll ask a quick question of Chief. When we're talking about vacancies for lifeguards, and I understand in the seasonal, in the summer, we rely on a lot of recent high school grads and such to be the lifeguards. Is it that too strict of a pool? I mean, can they do that at 17, or do they have to be 18? Does that?
We actually train them down to 16 years old. So folks as young as 16 will come in for the training. We just processed, since the report has been finished, we just processed 19 additional. So we're close to 75 seasonals right now, which is very, very close to our pre-COVID numbers.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Goodson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I totally agree with Commissioner Tobias, that it's going to have to be a time that the cities pick up the slack or pick up this expense. And we're giving them, I think this year, to be prepared for the next fiscal year. So I have no issues here. If they can do it cheaper, please, please do it. But I was utterly amazed what it costs for a lifeguard. Makes me want to be young again, I guess. Thank you.
Commissioner Tobias, I do want to commend you on this, and I'm with you. We have to get lifeguards on the beach. Couple of questions, though. I can't help but I think like an accountant. County manager, I said it right, do we have $800,000 to do this with right now?
Of course, we would make whatever adjustments in the budget are going to be necessary. So we would obviously, we would make those adjustments if that's the Board direction, and change current priorities that are there. So the answer is, it's not readily there. However, I would work with staff, and since we're only talking about a quarter of the year, we would find money in the current budget, at least to get us through this year before we would, you know, the cities would be taking over next year, according to what I'm hearing the Board saying.
If it's a quarter of a year, is it still $800,000?
I don't, for the cities to take over everything that they are doing, yeah, I think it would be somewhat close to that number.
Okay. The other question is, is if the cities just say no, is there anything, what happens, because I know we went through with the CRAs and stuff, how long is this negotiation going to take?
I don't know how long. Obviously, for example, I would say this is similar to with the CRAs, what we had to deal with, and that took a significantly longer period of time. If the Board direction was we would only continue it through, you know, this season, it would be up to the cities to decide whether or not, when the new fiscal year starts, if they wanted coverage. The Board is not under any obligation outside of the current agreements that we have in place, where, as Commissioner Tobias mentioned, they were paying 26% of seasonal lifeguards, but that would only go into the next year. We would have to make adjustments to those existing agreements. And the ones we don't have any agreements with, of course, you know, the Board's free to do as it pleases, as it relates to where we are paying the full costs of the full-time towers, which is at 100% right now.
Gotcha. Commissioner Tobias, you got a little more aggressive than I was going to in this, Commissioner Tobias, but I do like your proposal, if we can pull it off. But let me throw out this thought, just for us to talk on right now, as we're trying to make a decision. I love that you have us, being the Brevard County beaches, is 100%. It's our responsibility. We should do that. And just a little side note on that, from what we went through with the COVID season, I'm not going to be willing for this Board to ever give up control of those beaches that we have, because it gave us the ability to leave it open at the Governor's direction, so people could go outside and be in the beach. So we talked about that over Lori Wilson Park at one time. I'm not willing to do it. I think the county government must maintain control of those for the good of our citizens. The other thought, Commissioner Tobias, I was thinking, is that the ones that do charge for parking, I think probably they should have full responsibility, but maybe the ones who don't, we could do it 50/50. And I agree with you that, you know, our district doesn't have beaches. Unless you guys want to give me your beaches, I'd be glad to take them. But I think just from us utilizing, you know, those beaches all up and down the coast, it wouldn't be bad for the county to go ahead and do a 50/50 on those ones that they don't charge for parking. So that was just my thought on it, with being fair as far as those types of things. But just a little caveat, too, to think about, if there's a way that we could find a way to partner or get some of the funding through the TDT, and then reimburse the city and the county for some of these, because I really believe these lifeguards are very necessary for the tourist development areas. Again, my district doesn't get any of those funds. It, you know, goes to those places with lifeguards, but it is very, very important that we're able to maintain safety on the beach. So I think that's something we need to really think about. I know it's not always popular, but if you think about the best bang for the buck with those funds, that might be a good thing for us to look at later, is finding a way to move some of those ones over to the general, so we can release more of those funds to help cover the safety issues. And Commissioner Tobias, you've always been heavy on public safety. I think I remember the first round of ARPA, you gave all of your funds to public safety. So that's just something I was kicking around here, y'all's thoughts on it. But Commissioner Tobias, you did a lot of great work on this. County manager, your report was wonderful. And Mr. Bate, is this a new light, or?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bate.
No, no, that's an old light.
See, Rob, you keep answering questions on here now.
I saw him push the button.
I've known him for a long time, by the way.
This question's from Morris, I think. With regards to the TDT, we had talked before about some of that could be used to pay for some things with parks, and then that money saved from parks stay in the general fund, and we could use it for other things, including lifeguards. But I thought recently we had talked about that some tourism tax could be used for lifeguards. Is that right?
Historically, there was an opinion that except for certain small counties that are specifically authorized by statute, that counties could not use TDT for lifeguards. However, there have been some changes in statute since those opinions of the Attorney General, which are pretty dated opinions. In addition to the changes of statute, we have a particular statutory authorization regarding lifeguards in Brevard County, and I think those things combined opened the door for us to at least fund the capital improvements consisting of new towers and the operation and maintenance of those towers with TDT.
That's good. Good catch.
Was that clear enough? I'm sorry if I
No.
overcomplicated it, but.
No, that's clear for me.
I'll support that, Commissioner Felton.
There would have to be a study, certain findings, and a recommendation from the TDC.
Okay, so it's not something we're going to do today, anyways?
No, it takes a long time.
Okay. I'll have some comments in the future then when we bring that back up.
Yeah. Okay, I have no more lights.
I've got.
Commissioner Goodson, sir.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I sure hope the TDT never runs out of money, because we surely go to it all the time. But But I'm a firm believer that if the city, let me ask this question. Liability-wise, if the city doesn't want to pay, Morris, do we have any liability to provide them with life, full towers?
We do not have a legal obligation to provide towers within the cities. We have the ability to, due to a special law that applies in Brevard County. Typically, you couldn't spend dollars from the unincorporated exclusively within incorporated limits. So what we have is a may. We are authorized and empowered to pay for maintenance and operation of lifeguard towers in the municipal limits. We're not required to.
Is there?
Other than by agreement. We do have standing agreements with several of the municipalities right now, sir.
Is there anywhere that cities come back to help the county with money that you're aware of? No. Frank?
They, they, outside of what they've currently agreed to, that's the limit, 26% for some seasonal towers.
But my question is, is there any city on any other field, playing field, do they come back to you and give you money to help you, help us, the county?
No.
No, I don't think so. Okay. Well, you know, it's, and if the state owns the High Water Line, is that correct, my understanding? Mean Water Line?
They own Down Beach from the Mean High Water Line, yes, sir. In trust for the people, they hold it in trust for the people.
Well, Florida fellas, can you get on that with the state then?
Well, I just don't understand why they would not, they did, the CRA, they didn't perform, they're not going to perform in this, you're going to have to drag them to the trough to get them to agree to pay, but yet they deserve to pay. It's not all ours, because what would be next? That's my only comment. And I do support Tabia, Commissioner Tabia, his proposal.
Thank you. Commissioner Tabia, I, just a thought to see if you would consider the ones that aren't charging parking, that we go ahead and help out with that, because the county citizens do utilize that. I just think that part might be fair. So, and you start the negotiation, I'm with you completely on it. I know how long that takes, we'll get those negotiations going, but it is going to be tough for them to come up with their budget, but if they're already charging for parking, they have a way to do it, so.
Madam Chair.
And we're good partners with them typically.
First of all, you made a suggestion last time, and I thought it was a great idea. Unfortunately, Morris over here poo-pooed it, so I don't, I want to blame Morris over here. You suggested a TDT loan to cover that differential in cost, and unfortunately, statute got in the way, so we'll blame the lawyer up here. But I brought that to the county manager's attention. He was the one that figured the way to reallocate those dollars to cover that. So I liked your idea. Unfortunately, statute and Morris did not. And again, that would have been a loan to, a loan from TDT so we could fully repay it. So I don't want you to think that, you know, your suggestion wasn't heard. Second of all, the 50, the 50-50 split, I don't think is necessary. And let me tell you why, because the parks I'm looking at here doing, all charge for parking already. So, so beginning 2023, 2024, we've got the Cocoa Beach Pier that has metered parking, Shepherd, Shepherd Park, we've got Coconuts, which has private parking as well as metered parking, Tulip, which has metered parking, Boardwalk, again, metered parking, and Ocean Ave, metered parking. In fact, all of the handout, the second page of the handout I have there has those amounts. We pulled those budgets. So, you know, there's, all I'm looking at here is ones that, that cover that. So let me, first of all, tell you where we are in this. We have two MOUs with Cocoa Beach, which expire September 4th, 2023. So as we go into negotiations, we don't have an existing contract on that, and we can go forward. We have ILAs with Indy Atlantic and Melbourne Beach that end February 28th, 2027. And while that may sound problematic, it's actually not, because when these contracts were agreed upon, thankfully, the county had an agreement, and they allowed them to be amended annually to adjust for dates of service and do increase rates, actually no less than CPI. So here, we're increasing it to, or would be potentially increasing this to actual cost. Those can be found on Page 1, Section 2 and 3 of the agreements. So let me go over the motion here, and I'll go over this slowly, and let me be clear with this. I have run this by staff to make sure that it meets the goals that I laid out. I want to point out that I'm not trying to pull a fast one on anyone, that's why it's so detailed. So there are four points. The motion would be to approve priorities 1 through 3 as written in the Brevard County Fire Rescue 2022, 2020, sorry, 2023 Ocean Rescue Assessment and direct staff to move forward with tower upgrades as soon as possible. Costs to achieve the priorities will be funded by the county relocating, reallocating from this year's budget and making adjustments to the fiscal year 2324 budget. County funding for full-time in the Atlantic Boardwalk Lifeguard Tower to expire at the end of 2022, fiscal year 2022, 2023. Authorize the county manager to make necessary budget adjustments to accomplish any ocean lifeguard staffing modifications as the board directs. Number 2, direct staff to negotiate annual service contracts as directed by the board with the cities of Cocoa Beach, Town of Indy Atlantic, Town of Melbourne Beach, and any other municipalities in which the towns or cities are billed at actual cost for the parks maintained by the towers or cities in which they are located.
Okay.
Staff shall bring the negotiated agreements to Brevard County Board of County Commissioners for approval within 60 days of close of negotiations. If the cities object, staff will come back to the Board of County Commissioners for direction. And finally, if the cities elect not to use lifeguard services by Brevard County, staff will readjust their extreme recruiting efforts accordingly. That is the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have any more discussion? Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you, Commissioner Tabia. Looking forward to see. County manager, you got your marching orders here. We always keep you busy, well, Commissioner Tabia keeps you busy. I do want to go ahead and reiterate, I hope I said that word right, that we start working on doing some of the TDT capital improvements, just to help give some relief to the cities as well on that, so that we don't, not do good work on that to save lives in those heavy tourist beach areas, because I think it's important. All right, we are moving to the next item. Were you trying to put a light on?
No, let's turn it off.
Okay. You're a lot of fun. Okay, item I-3.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be quick with this one. The purpose of this item is to seek citizen input on expanding an existing beach access in Indy Atlantic. District 3 ARPA funds would be used, were used to get renderings done to visualize the changes. I don't know if this thing's set up. Okay, do we, oh, sorry, that's.
That's for the vice vice chair.
Man, I'm getting all.
That's for the vice vice chair.
I don't know. You should never give me a clicker. Can we get those renderings up?
Save them, Don.
Perfect. Amenities would include a new raised wooden walkway with new guardrails, a new split-rail fence, showers, and bike racks. Sea turtle safe lights will also be included. As there is no D-5 Commissioner currently, I thought it would be pertinent to seek input from the local citizens before making any decisions. I have, of course, reached out to the D-5 office concerning this. My office would send letters to homeowners within 500 feet radius and collect the input. These are the citizens, hopefully, that would be using the access most. This project would be funded, again, with D-3 ARPA funds, should we decide to move forward. So the motion would be to request approval for the D-3 office to send letters on behalf of the board to the surrounding neighbors that are within 500 feet radius of the beach access located in the Atlantic across from Beach Street, and ask for the input regarding improvements to the access. I would bring the findings back to the board when they are collected. That is the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any comments? All right, you're using your ARPA funds on it?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, and always interested in hearing, I'm sorry, the public comment on this is closed, it was in the beginning, so we're a little late on that one. I have a second by Commissioner Felton. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, interested in hearing how that works out, and thank you for taking care of District 5 without a Commissioner. And I was going to like ask you how this affects the lifeguards, but I'm going to leave it alone right now.
And I will be in concert with the D-5 office on this, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving into item I-4. And that is, this is one that I've brought forward, and we've been, gosh, we've been working on this project since I think I was like seven months into my office. Carol could probably recite this as well as I could. We've met with the community, we've met with the builders of the subdivision, and we lost a lawsuit a while ago, and we have to figure out a way to allow people to get in and out, and it's been a lot of work. So what we did is we finally pulled all of the great minds together, powers that be, and we've come up what we think might be something that'll work again. The entities that are building the subdivision have a lot of hurdles to still get through, but I picked this one as what I feel is best for my community up there, for them to move forward and see if they can go ahead and do all the required work. And they got a lot of big road ahead of them, again. And so anyways, Commissioners, I would appreciate your support on this, if you would mind. I've spent a lot of hours on this. So do I have any comments or a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tabia?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you, and I'll be bringing back the updates on that. It's a substantial project. All right, moving into board reports, and, yep, those are all that one. County manager?
I said enough, no additional board report.
You did very well, sir. County attorney?
I have no report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Goodson?
I have none, Madam Chair.
All right, Commissioner Tabia?
No report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Felton?
I have no report.
All right, and I've got one, and that's to say happy birthday to Commissioner Felton. I believe you just had a big birthday here recently.
Some people thought it was bigger yesterday.
All right, well, Commissioner Goodson mentioned it, and so, so that comes from his heart. Okay, and I have no other comments from that, so I'm going to turn this over to Vice-Vice Chair Tabia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I appreciate the responsibility that has been entrusted in me for this, and I think it was probably a bad decision by the rest of the board. These are things that I had planned, had I ever been elected chair. Hopefully, that never happened, so getting a little bit of a taste of that is greatly appreciated. So before we get to public comment, which is extremely important, I have the gavel, so I want to have some, my daughter's in school, I always asked her, what did you learn? So I want to pass some stuff on. Today, believe it or not, is National Drinking with Chickens Day. So I have this sign up here, and I think it's kind of interesting. This was done by AI. I initially put in John Tabia, National Drinking with Chickens Day, and unfortunately, it said, quote, "It goes against ethical and moral standards." So useless information there, but it's National Chicken Day. Now we move into Florida useless fact, and I think this is kind of interesting here. Once a year, thousands of Floridians stand at the state line and toss dead fish into Alabama. Coincidentally, in Alabama, they call this manna from heaven, you know, so they very much appreciate that. It is dead true, there are pictures that this goes, it's an annual mullet toss hosted by Florida Bama Beach Bar in Pensacola. So there's your Florida fact of the day. Let me hit you with this day in Florida history. On this day in 1898, the School for Deaf and Blind graduated their first students. Mr. Pope and Ms. Carlton, who later married, the most famous graduate of the Florida School for Deaf and Blind, is actually Ray Charles. And he did not graduate, but obviously he had an illustrious career. And finally, I think we all can agree on this one, that we have quite a great staff. We have many of them up here. So I reached out to the heads of the departments and asked for some submissions. So each time, I will be highlighting somebody who we may not see on a consistent basis, but makes our jobs so much easier. The first one I had got was Michelle Summers. She has 18 years of service to Brevard County, currently as Parks Financial Coordinator in the Parks and Rec Department. Michelle loves budget numbers. She has been in Brevard County since 2004, 18 years in various positions throughout Parks and Rec Department. Now, I got this from the Parks and Rec Director. So this is her words, she excels in her position and has done an excellent job filling in for vacant support service manager. Her sense of humor is awesome, and she always finds a way to make work fun. So those are one, her boss is saying these things. She's a wonderful employee. Michelle is married to a wonderful husband. Her husband and her have two children, two grandchildren, and two dogs are very important. She loves to vacation in the mountains and just bought a, quote, "decked-out Ford F-150 truck." So Michelle, thank you so much for making our jobs that much easier. You are very much appreciated. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm going to begin with the speaker cards, and I'd like to start, I have very few. Daniel Callen, please. After Daniel Callen will be Doris Varna.
Good morning. Well, I'm Daniel Callen. I'm here to visit Courtney Palm's Apartments in East Coast Christian Center. We have a big problem over there, actually for the whole Merritt Island area. The problem is, the high cost of rent has tripled, doubled, and so forth. During this past six months, we had eight residents to pass away. Couple of them were my neighbors due to stress. They're not giving these people opportunities to make arrangements. They just give them three or four days, they're evicted. I have people coming to me asking, what do I do? I say, come face the people that's got the power. I'm looking at you right now. So actually, we need help. We're not getting it. We've got people moving out every day. I notice our school students are dropping. Don't see near as many. Our neighbors, they're disappearing. I see the homeless almost double within six months. It's getting worse, and it's going to get worse until we get help. So that's why I'm here, I'm asking for help, and that's it. Appreciate what can be done, and I'm going to be patient as long as I can. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Callen. Doris Varna, and after Doris will be Diana Cronenberg.
Sorry, I don't look better today. I'm Doris Varna. I'm on Merritt Island. I work with East Coast Christian Church Service. I go to East Coast, we have a big food bank at our church. And like Danny had just said, we have a terrible, serious problem on Merritt Island. It's not only on Merritt Island, but it's beginning in Cocoa Beach and all down through Vera Beach. We had one guy that just called me today and told me that he had to move from Vera Beach because he's. Beach because he said he had the two-bedroom, $1,100 is what he was paying in rent, and he upped it to like $2,000. And I work at the food bank, and I have people coming in. Every week, we serve 600, at least 550 to 600 people every week needing food, and they're coming in. We have people coming through the food bank with their furniture in their cars because they got kicked out. It is very serious because we have people that's coming through that are in their senior years. There's a couple that came in and they had, both of them's got physical problems. They bought a trailer in a trailer park. A big company come in, bought the trailer park out, and anyhow, they said, well, what are we gonna do? Because we don't have the money to buy food now because they doubled the rent. It's okay to raise the rent a little bit, but you know, to double it and triple it is horrible. These people are now coming to the time where they're being homeless. And like Danny said, I see Merritt Island, and I see more and more homeless people coming in. But you know what gets me is that these people that are in these low-income places, and there's four low-income places that have been bought out by big companies from up north, and they're only giving them a certain amount of time to get out. These people have disappeared. There was one lady, she come down to me, she says, I got 10 days. I have to get out of my apartment. And anyhow, she did. Now they're sticking her with an $1,800 security deposit. She was one day off. But what I'm saying is, we need some serious help in this community in Brevard County. I mean, these people are going hungry, they're going homeless. And us at the church, we are trying our best to help these people, but I'm making a plea to you guys, please, please try to help them. Because I too have to find a place for myself. I live in an RV, and zoning is zoning everything out from trailers and RVs. So it's kind of like, what do we do? I'm 65 years old, I can't go too much more. But I am standing for the senior people, and I'm just praying, and I'm just asking for you guys to help.
Thank you, Doris. Diana. And after Diana, Isabel.
Good morning. I'm Diana Cronenberg from Melbourne, and I'm a volunteer with Space Coast Bunnies. It's a domestic rabbit rescue group here in Brevard. I wanted to ask the board to meet with our group and work on some solutions for dealing with the ever-increasing rabbit dumping crisis we're experiencing in the county. Our rescue repeatedly gets calls about dumped rabbits and accidental litters. In one case, a family bought two rabbits. Pet store said they were both female, but they were wrong. One was male, and they wound up with two accidental litters of 15 babies in two months. They spent thousands on spay-neuter surgeries for all 17, where each surgery can cost from $300 to $800, depending on the clinic. This could all have been avoided if the pet store was more careful in determining the sex of the rabbits. This isn't the only time our rescue has gotten calls from families with accidental litters after pet stores sold them what they claimed were same-sex pairs. Often, families can't afford to keep all these rabbits. They just release them out into the wild, and then they quickly multiply into colonies like the one we had in Rockledge a couple of years ago. Our rescue is all volunteer-based, and we cannot handle the ever-increasing volume of these dumped rabbits alone anymore. I ask that you please consider meeting with us and discuss some solutions to prevent out-of-control colonies from developing here like is happening in other Florida counties. Thank you.
Diana, will you wait one second? I've got a card or light over here for Commissioner Felton.
I would just say that I met with your group yesterday, and we had a good conversation. And I appreciate all the information that they shared. So we'll continue to talk in the coming months, I think, after our break. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
Isabel Brooks. And after Isabel is Tracy Graff.
Good morning, commissioners. I just wanted to help bring a light to our heavy issue regarding defenseless rabbits in our surrounding areas that need our help. Rabbits are being dumped into our neighborhoods daily. Their owners think that they're doing something good for their animals in letting them free, but it's a death sentence. They are not like wild rabbits. They don't know how to care for themselves, protect themselves, or find proper food. Another thing most people don't realize is how much like dogs and cats they are. Bunnies are so very sweet and loving, and they are so misunderstood, and they don't deserve to be going through the slow and scary death that comes to them if they aren't rescued. All rabbits have such individual personalities. I have two sweet babies at home that are my emotional support funds, and they're my whole world. They can do all sorts of tricks, and they make me so happy. People dumping rabbits is a huge issue, but people do it lightly because they don't know any better. For example, how would you feel if you showed up to a different country and people were buying puppies just because they're cute and then dumping them when it gets hard to take care of them? You would see all these innocent young dogs suffering, and you would try to educate the people that dogs are so smart, loving, loyal, have such big personalities, and they need help. Educating people is what we're trying to do, because when you know better, you do better. No animal deserves to suffer like this. Rabbits are getting terribly sick, injured, poisoned by angry residents, and they are all suffering. There are so many ways we can work together to handle this situation. Please consider helping in any way you can. Together, we can bring comfort, full bellies, and safety to the ones who don't have a voice to cry out for help. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Isabel. Good job. Tracy Graff is next. After Tracy, Sandra Sullivan.
I do have some handouts for you. Should I give them to you now? I don't, my clock's ticking. So you want them before I talk, or after I talk, or during?
Pass them out.
Pass them out? Okay.
Okay. You just hand them, and I'll pass them down.
Okay. So I'm just gonna summarize what that's about. I'm a nurse. I own Avid Home Care in Merritt Island. I had a group of these people locally, Doris, Danny, come to me regarding an article I had written about homelessness in seniors. I ended up getting involved in this. I am definitely being their advocate. It was recommended by multiple people that we came here to speak to you all today about this. Bottom line is, eight large low-income housing complexes have been bought out by a company from New Jersey called Opus Management. They bought it in January of 2022. Basically, rents have all been raised. Most of them are going into effect June 1st. There's been, I don't even know how many evictions, because it's a total of 1,500 apartments in all. There's two buildings in Titusville, two in Cape, and four in Merritt Island. Most of these people are now on our streets. And since my business is right in central Merritt Island on North Courtney, and I take care of senior citizens, I felt that it was necessary for me to raise awareness with other business owners that these seniors are gonna be behind our buildings, behind our churches. They're gonna be in every wooded lot we can find in Merritt Island. They're gonna be in people's backyards because they have nowhere to go. They're being evicted without their belongings. They can only go so far. Many of them don't drive. They have, they have been living in these absolutely deplorable complexes for 15, 16, 17 years because that's the only place they can afford to live. Not because they want to live there, not because they're collecting benefits. These people are living off their SSI that they earned, and they cannot afford the rent. You raise the rent, they can't fix their income, they can't raise their income. So what do they do? There is nowhere else to go. There literally is nowhere else to go. They are the cheapest apartments in the area. And now, there's been a clean sweep. Country Club Apartments is practically empty. They all have new names. I have them all there. You know, the deal was, I don't know about the real estate deal, but that's why I gave Morris that little chart. This is the real problem. I mean, I don't, and I feel like there's a lot of people working on it, but nobody working together. There's a lot of great programs out there. Housing for Homeless has a great program. We are, I am trying to find private property owners who will partner with these places to rent to seniors on fixed incomes. I've been trying very hard for several months, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. That's it?
Yep. You have three minutes.
Got it.
Sandra Sullivan.
Can I say something with that?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I don't have the lights in front of me. Chair.
Ma'am, I do want to mention that I appreciate you coming because you put in a solution here of what to do.
Yeah, I'm a nurse.
Really good. I wanted to mention that, but I thank you for taking on this project. This is daunting, and thank you for doing this. And everybody's coming along trying to pick up other things to help with this problem as well. And so you did put in here, reaching out to Governor DeSantis, and I wanted to say that publicly because that's something we can all do to help. So I just want to thank you for that. And it's a statewide problem. I know. Well, they up the wages on people. Everybody's insurance has doubled. Food, they can say it's only 30%. It's 50%. So the cost we're trying to pay right now, and they're on fixed income. So I just want to say that, but thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Tabaya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sandra Sullivan, and ending with Keith Johnson after Sandra. I forgot to ask, Sandra, can you give us your city as your?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So this past week was the Affordable Housing Summit, an all-day event, which was very informative. There's a lot of money, almost $1 billion, coming from the state to help with affordable housing, but in my opinion, doesn't really address the underlying causes for more meaningful legislation to help to address the problem rather than provide more socialism-type solutions. So insurance is number one. Insurance is number one issue. And in June, the reinsurance market will give new ratings to the companies. We've lost nine companies last year. We'll lose more in June following. Citizens is going from 1.2 million policies to 2 million policies. With that, they have done to write that risk. So we have rate increases there. FEMA flood insurance in many areas in Florida is going up over 200%. So all of this really affects our fixed-income people, our veterans. We have 58,000 veterans here in Brevard County, and I'm very concerned about the people in my community. But I also want to say what the county does also affects our taxes, and it concerns me greatly about the budget workshop, which was canceled. And as you can see, we have transportation capacity problems. We have roads that are at capacity. We have roads over, near capacity and over capacity. And that turns out, that number is $699 million for unfunded capacity improvements. Now, we kicked the can down the road on the dump for, until we ran out of dump space at Sarno. And then we started building a dump that takes five years to build, and then assessments passed on to the public. My understanding is now with the long lines at Sarno, that waste management is asking for more money. So we kicked the can down on now transportation because impact fees haven't been increased in 23 years. Other impact fees haven't been increased in 32 years. We're gonna burden people. That's what we're doing. And even on affordable housing, you guys need, in my opinion, get ahead of the impact of allowing the developers to not pay property tax. And then you have waived impact fees, and then you have fees that are not even consistent with CPI. And so who's gonna pay for this? It's gonna be the people. It's gonna be the people that pay for that. And that's the people that are on fixed incomes, our veterans, the people that are barely scraping by. You want to look at a socialist country like Venezuela where you have an elite and you have the poor. We're losing our middle class, and I encourage this commission to get ahead of this and be proactive.
Thank you, Sandra. Keith Johnson. Please give us your address.
Good morning. Keith Johnson, Merritt Island, South Tropical Trail.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring light to the short-term rental industry that's impacted Brevard County and, of course, the state of Florida significantly throughout the last five or six years. I made some requests to meet with Commissioner Goodson here recently. I hope you received my email, and I'd still like to meet with you and discuss some options we have. Brevard County currently, in my area, in South Tropical Trail, has a 90-day rental restriction, and that has been, I think it was instituted in 2011. Didn't really address the needs of today's rental market. And the reason why I tell you this is because, for instance, Naples, the hurricane that went through last year, I housed under emergency authority people that transplanted over here to Brevard County while they didn't have a home to live in. I was brought up and paid $13,000 of fines by Brevard County because I was housing people under the short-term rental program. Just recently, I just was assessed $20,000 by Brevard County for neighbors accusing me of having my friends at my home. There's nothing on the short-term rental guidelines as how I report family, friends, invitees to my house versus having a neighbor accuse me of having short-term rentals. So the magistrate listened to both sides. I had a 90-day contract. I'm also a Realtor with Berkshire Hathaway. A 90-day written agreement for someone to stay in my house, and I was accused of short-term rentals. So we have to devise some way to either have a standard, a guideline, or a reporting system. I don't know if all you commissioners report your family and friends in your home to the county, but I know I don't. But if there needs to be some sort of a vetting system, we need to do that because I'm being blamed for something that is not occurring. In addition, I know the short-term rental market has been a hotbed for Brevard County and many counties because of maybe the complaints, the noise, maybe the trash and the parking and so on and so forth. That really doesn't happen on large homes, an acre and a quarter on the open intercoastal. My people that I have that did come under the short-term rental were multiple generational families looking for space that hotels and resorts cannot provide. They want to take advantage of beautiful Brevard wildlife. They want to see fish, dolphins, manatees play. They can't get that at the beach hotel or resort and so on and so forth. So I would encourage my commissioners devise a plan to address the short-term rental. And thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
That's your three minutes. I may agree with you, but I still gotta cut you off.
Thank you.
Is there a light on? Just making sure. Okay, with that, I'll close public comment and turn it back over to the real chair.
Thank you, Vice Vice Chair. And I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.